Okay, good morning, everyone. We are on the record. Today is Monday, the 22nd day of November in the year 2021. This is an ad hoc committee meeting to investigate Suez Water. We, uh, excuse me, uh, this is a, uh, sorry about that. In effort to adhere to social distancing protocols and best practices imposed by the city and state authorities. The City of Jersey City has canceled all public meetings and closed non-essential services as of March 16th, 2020 until further notice. As a result, this ad hoc committee meeting will be held virtually as a video conference with public access. We had a scheduled 11:00 AM start due to some technical difficulties. We are, the clock on my computer is showing 11:17 AM. May I have a roll call for the commencement of this ad hoc committee meeting? Counselperson Prinzieri?
Here.
Counselperson Bajiano is not here. Okay. Counselperson Solomon?
Here.
Counselperson Lavoro, I don't see him.
He won't be in, he won't be here today. You can't make it.
Okay, no problem. Thanks, Councilperson and Council President.
Here.
Alrighty. We have three council members in attendance at 11:17 AM. In addition, at the time of its preparation, the notice of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Thursday, November 18th, 2021, at 11:00 AM to the mayor, the municipal council, business administrator, corporation council, and the local newspapers, and posted on the city's website. So I can certify as to our total compliance with the Sunshine Law. Okay, Council President, we're going to turn it over to Chairman Counselperson Solomon.
Yes.
Alrighty, um, thank you all for being here. I thank you clerk and representatives. You know, the goal of today's conversation is for us to sort of constructively discuss emergency communications from Suez's perspective, from OEM and from, uh, MUA, and you know, talk through how things went the last time, how things could get potentially better in the future. Um, I believe we have a number of representatives from Suez, and I think when we turn it over to you guys, we'll allow you to do an introduction. Um, I think we have Director Kiers from OEM and we have Director Kuna from MUA. Um, wanted to just start with, um, a quick recap of the last meeting. Um, we just sort of talked about what we wanted to do collectively through the committee. Uh, we agreed on sort of four meetings before the end of the year, uh, this being the, the first of those four. And we wanted to talk through emergency communications is one of the key pieces. Then we want to talk to water distribution at a future meeting. And again, the goal is for us all come up with a collectively, a, a set of solutions we think will improve things after, um, both the Ida incidents as well as the, the Ecoli and other, other things. So wanted to kind of start the hearing by letting each of the three folks or three representatives, uh, MUA, OEM, and Suez just talk through their emergency communications procedures. So we all start at the same page and we understand what's happening. We have a kind of a collective base of, of knowledge. Um, and the questions that we had outlined, feel free to, to add more if you think that's important are, what is the chain of command during an emergency in your organization? You know, who and how are emergency communications procedures established? And what have been the limitations in your communications over the last two years? Um, why don't we start, uh, with Director Kirsten OEM, uh, speaking from the city perspective, and then turn it over to, Director Kuna from MUA and then from Suez. So Director Kiers, does that work for you? Director, I see you're on the meeting, but you may be muted.
Director Kiers, are you there?
Why don't we do, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Councilperson Solomon, can we start with, uh, maybe, uh, Director Kuna first and come back to Kiers?
Sure, Director Kuna, are you available?
Yes, I am.
Great, why don't we?
Thank you, Council.
And thank you, Director, for your time and for being here.
Sure, absolutely. So, um, I'd like to start off by just, um, differentiating between the, uh, different types of water-specific emergencies that we might have that would come up, that would also with, uh, MUA. Obviously Suez on behalf of the MUA and the MUA on behalf of the city, right? So, uh, so specifically with the boiled water advisory, there's a certain trigger that would, uh, require us to put out a boiled water advisory. Um, as, as we presented in the past, that's triggered and actually follows specifically the EPA guidelines on drinking water, which the NJDP has wholeheartedly adopted and has modified to the more stringent side, certain aspects of that. Uh, so, so I just wanted to make that clear. Um, regarding last year's boiled water incident, uh, which was actually a Ecoli, ended up being an Ecoli emergency. Um, we had a lot of lessons learned from that and, uh, want to say some of them were, and some of them were just simply acknowledged. Um, we faced significant deep fines for the way it was handled. Uh, specifically though, there was only about things that the DEP was really harping on. As regards meeting timelines and the three milestones that they require, when I say they, I mean, DEP and the EPA, uh, we did meet those even last year during the Ecoli event. Where there was, uh, some clarity that, uh, should have been added, that we did get, uh, dinged on. Uh, we did not include the word Ecoli, as you might recall, in one of the public, uh, announcements that was made. However, that was made, I believe it was made by social media. Uh, the other part was we weren't supposed to put that out yet because the DEP signed off on every release of public dissemination of information. Uh, the reason for that is to keep the control and to keep the, uh, chain of custody, if you will, uh, in the hands of the DEP to make sure that we don't errantly, you know, uh, alarm the public or alarm them in a way that would be misleading. So, that being said, BWA boiled water advisory is a very egregious situation that would trigger that, but on a daily basis, as many of you know, we may just have something that is still considered an emergency such as a water main break or something else that would not rise to the level that would trigger the, um, boiled water advisory. Uh, so giving you that background information, I would like to just call upon Jason O'Brien, Director of the Opera, of Operations for Suez, to kind of go through the BWA specifically, when we do trigger or when we do rise to the level of BWA, because the two most prominent events were last August and this past August. Um, the Ecoli incident last August and Ida with the, uh, the break that we suffered in the aqueduct up in, uh, Cedar Grove, I believe it was. So Jason, if you could just kind of walk through the, uh, communications SOP that we worked almost a year with the NJDP closely on to, to, um, assemble?
Sure, Joe. Uh, hi, everybody. I'm Jason O'Brien. I'm the, uh, the general manager, uh, for Suez and I oversee, um, the Jersey City operations here, uh, for the MUA and the city. Um, if I could just take a minute, I have a couple of people here with me. I know you, you wanted to, uh, introduce people from Suez.
My call. Sorry, Jason, go ahead.
It's okay. Um, I have Xavier Castro with me. Xavier, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. My name is Xavier Castro. I'm the president for Environmental Services, which is our division that oversees all the municipal contracts. Thank you for having us.
And then we have Rich Henning, uh, with us as well. Rich?
Sorry, Jason, got to find that magic button. Allow me to speak. Uh, my name is Rich Henning. I'm the Senior Vice President of Communications and Government Affairs for Suez and have been with the company, uh, for over 30 years.
Okay, um, so that's our team that's, uh, here with you today. Um, but to get to what, where Joe was going, um, yeah, so what we did from the uh, Ecoli event back in August of 2020 is we developed a whole new, um, emergency communications SOP. It's, it's actually came as a action item from the meeting that we had, uh, with the council, um, back when that event happened. Uh, and from that, um, we set up, you know, certain milestones, right? The, um, what we heard from the city is the communication wasn't quick enough. Um, so we really worked with the DEP and the MUA, um, to set up a communications, emergency, called emergency communications SOP, um, to make sure that the internal communications were happening quickly as well as the, uh, approvals with DEP on the proper public notification that needed to go out to all the customers. And then, and then a plan to be able to distribute that, um, using the DEP and EPA's guidelines, uh, to the customers. Um, that communications SOP we used with this, this last event. Um, and we were able to, uh, meet those guidelines and there were some stringent timeframes, uh, to meet in that communications SOP. The, um, you know, a boil water advisory though can happen from many different types of events. Um, you know, this, this most recent one, um, we had a breach in the aqueduct, um, to where, uh, raw water was able to get into the treated drinking water. You know, and from that, um, you know, the determination was made that, you know, it could put health at risk. Um, so the boil water advisory was, was issued to the whole city from that, from that risk.
Director Kuna, I mean, uh, do you have more you want to add or should we, um, ask a few questions?
Our friends from Suez. Yeah, absolutely. No, absolutely. I'd like to, uh, I'd like to go a little bit further towards your, your, uh, original question. Uh, I believe, just so you can have full clarity on, on answering it. Um, so I believe I previously sent out a, uh, timeline that we followed that included all of the communication from the moment we were notified by Suez that we had a breach, uh, through the moment that we lifted the boiled water advisory for the Ida event. Are you all still familiar with that, uh, document that I sent out? And if not, I'm going to circulate it anyway, again, to all of you.
We, we probably have it, but if you can re-circulate it.
Yeah, absolutely. There were three milestones that the DEP requires us. I think I, um, I do want to make clear that, uh, it's documented in that, in that timeline that we did meet and actually exceed the, uh, amount of time. Uh, we beat, let's just say we beat the dude, dude time, the deadline for each of those three milestones by an average of about an hour and a half on this event. Uh, the first event from last August, we also met those timelines, though we were a lot closer to the deadline time. Uh, and I did want, uh, Jason, if possible, if you could kind of walk through just some of the SOP actual action steps from the moment. And let's use the Ida event. Um, for example, from the moment you called me, I believe it was a telephone call, uh, and some of the bigger moments as we went through. Do you, do you happen to have that in front of you, the SOP or?
I do, Joe. Um, um, so if you want, Joe, I'll just kind of talk a little bit about this, right? So, um, we became aware of a potential incident. It was about 12:20, um, that afternoon, uh, where we have some inline equipment on the drinking water before it comes into Jersey City and it monitors the, uh, the actual water itself. Now, once we noticed that there was an issue there, um, with the, with that monitoring equipment, uh, we reached out to, uh, the DEP and then I, and then I reached out to, um, to Joe, to Executive Director Joe Cunha. Um, and then it was around the two o'clock, uh, 2:00 PM timeframe, um, where we identified the breach, uh, in the aqueduct. And that's when I knew that we had a, you know, a serious event. Um, and I called, uh, Joe Cunha at that time. Uh, we were also in communications with the DEP at that time. And, um, it was, uh, shortly after that where, um, Joe had sent an email out, um, to what we call the, uh, the tier one notification group, which includes, you know, the city council, um, that we potentially have an incident with the aqueduct and a boil water advisory coming, uh, into the city. My indications that that was around 2:25 PM, um, that afternoon, about 25 minutes after we identified that we had the, uh, the breach. And, and that's actually a, um, one of the first milestones that has to happen, um, to where once we identified that there was going to be a boil water advisory with the DEP, um, that we make that proper notification, um, to everybody in the city, um, this, uh, within the, within one hour. Um, and so that was, that was completed at the, um, at two, at 2:25 PM, where the DEP indicated that it was going to, we did have to issue a boil water advisory at, uh, 4:24. So we started communicating even before the DEP came to us and told us that, uh, we had to do, um, a boil water advisory. Um, the next steps associated with that is, um, preparing the communications with the public notification. There's a specific guidelines to what the public notification has to say. Uh, we get that template from the DEP and we make some modifications to it that I, I provide to Joe Cunha to review. But at the same time, we're also getting the final approval from the DEP on the language for the public notification. We were able to, there was a requirement to, of a three hours from when they gave us that information of the public notification at 4:24. So by 7:24, we needed to have the approved public notification, uh, from the DEP. And we, we achieved that at, uh, at 6:11, uh, PM that evening. And then really the next steps there is once you have the approved, uh, public notification, it's really putting it out there to everybody. Um, and that, and that goes in the, in the steps of distribution to all the customers, where it's, it's posted on the websites, uh, we put it out on social media. Um, we get it to, uh, the broadcast media through TV, newspaper. Uh, we also get it on the, um, uh, our like mysuez.com. And then, uh, the JCMUA also takes that and puts it on their websites. Um, and then are posting out through social media as well. And then there is the, uh, the notify system, uh, which is happening all at the same time, which is, you know, all the customers that we have in our database, it's like a reverse 911 or SWIFT 911 that the city has to get out that information, uh, to everybody as well. Um, and that all started, uh, once we received the approval, um, from the DEP on the public notifications that needed to be broadcasted.
Jason, just to, in, in addition to that, it's posted on our IVR, which is if a customer calls in, it goes directly so they understand what's, what's come, what, what's going on. Uh, in, in, in addition to that, there are also text messages that went out as well, just to round that out.
Rich, can you just, uh, clarify what the IVR is?
Uh, the IVR is a, uh, if you're calling into Suez, as a customer might do, uh, if they've heard this information, uh, the IVR would be the, you know, the, the, uh, answering machine, if you will. But that would give the customer that information, uh, that there is a boil water advisory in the city of Jersey City, in this case also in Hopehoken, and, you know, we recommend that you boil your water. Uh, the recommendations come straight from the DEP for exactly one minute before using for cooking, drinking, and other assorted, uh, purposes. But that's what the IVR is.
Great, thanks.
And I think one of the questions, oh, I'm sorry, Joe. Go ahead.
No, it's okay. Give everyone the heads up that I just replied to all on the invite from Laura on the reminder email, just with the copy of the timeline that Jason you were reading from.
Yeah. The other thing I, um, I know was a question about what languages, right? And, uh, we put this out in English and in, uh, Spanish.
Yep, that timeline as well. That was a request by the DEP from the 2020 incident. Um, that's one of those, that's one of those areas where the DEP, uh, kind of takes the freedom of using the gray area to determine what, if any, specific, uh, sensitive groups or, or groups that need, uh, special language, uh, determine which it should be, should get it, and how it should be sent out. And for 2021, we followed exactly what they asked us to do. To that end.
Can I ask a question? Um, Joe or Jason, when you notify the council, what is the process there? Um, because, um, normally, um, we don't get it into us practically in the public. That's when we start finding out. So I, I just want to know, you know, because you say you notify the council. Uh, and I know my administrator, she never received anything and I don't receive nothing until it's out in the public just about.
So Council President, that's a good point. In 2020, you're exactly 100% accurate. Nothing was sent specifically to the council, uh, but in 2021 it was, and that was by me directly by email. It was the, uh, same thread, um, that I started that night.
Right.
The minute I released that petition. And then I kept replying to it and, and continuing even through the distribution and whatnot, the water distribution and the boiled water advisory.
So, so you, you provide, because I, I just want to get clarity. So it, it's your responsibility to provide it to the council, not Suez. They, they provide it to you and you provide it to the council.
Yes, internal, yes, good, good question. Inter-agency on this, on the Jersey City side, that's on me. That's on JCMUA.
Yeah, it's, um, it, it, Joe's right. The way the communication SOP is, is developed is that I'm the person from, um, Suez that's notifying, uh, Joe from the JCMUA and then Joe notifies the city.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And obviously in our absence, we have our redundancies, the people that would succeed us.
Okay.
Director, do you want to, uh, keep going or do you want to open it up for a couple of questions?
Uh, maybe, maybe at this point we open up to a couple of questions. Uh, I apologize that you didn't have this timeline. Uh, more recently, I should have sent it, uh, when Laura sent the, uh, the agenda out, but, uh, you now have it. Um, it's fairly simple, but, uh, you could follow the time straight forward. If you have any questions on that specifically, that's probably the best place to go, just so you can actually see for yourself how this all unfolded. And I do want to clarify that the highlighted points, there's only three entries here. 5:24 PM on September 2nd, 7:24 PM on September 2nd, and 10:08 PM on September 2nd. Those denote, those highlighted yellow, uh, entries denote the NJDP milestone requirements. Um, if you go up a few entries before each one of those, you'll see that we met those at least an hour, hour and a half before that on the, in each instance. Now, now, I want to clarify this because I've read the social media during both events. Um, the one thing that's a recurring theme from the public is that they're not getting information fast enough now. We need to be very, very clear. We were threatened under the tremendous weight of fines for giving the information out too soon in 2020 because we didn't follow the DEP guidelines. We put out the information at least three to five hours earlier. Um, the, the content of that information was a totally separate issue. That also came into question, but the fact, and that's the reason why the DEP is so stringent about us not disseminating information until they specifically have approved it in writing. Um, because it keeps the control that way again, to not cause mass panic. So I do need to make it very clear that anytime and every time that a boil water advisory is going to occur due to an event that triggers the need for a boil, right, boil water advisory or that rises to the, to the trigger level of the NJDP, which is essentially the EPA, there's going to be delay in the eyes of the public. It's just that simple. There's not a way that they can, because of all the steps that have to be followed, and you'll see right here in this timeline, this is a live event, live example. We followed everything to a T. I said it before, I'll say it again, it's right here. Um, but again, if you're a member of the public, you may perceive this as, that's just not good enough. It's too long. I've been drinking that water for all these hours before we were actually notified. And look, they're not wrong, but who are we to change federal and state law? We can try, but there's reasons why this is spelled out exactly the way it is. So, again, 2020 was a learning experience on various fronts and, uh, for the ensuing year, maybe a little bit short of a year. Um, we worked very closely with DEP to make sure that we followed this to a T and that's exactly what we did.
Thank you, Director. I appreciate that. Um, I think, uh, why don't we open it up for some questions and then move to Director Kiers after questions? And just quick timing note, I think, I think for, for me and for Council President, Councilman for there, for you guys, I think 12:15 is sort of the end time. Does that work for you guys? Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure we're all aware of time. Um, so why don't I, Council President, Councilman Prinzieri, do you guys have any initial questions you want to ask?
No, I, I, I asked minds during the process of, uh, how the council was notified because I was not clear on that. But now I got clear understanding exactly how, uh, the process goes. So that was, that was concerning for me.
I have a couple of questions, um, as it relates to, um, the notifications or the announcements that you had mentioned via, um, television. Um, so what, what media market are you in? How many stations does it cover? And do you, how is that disseminated? Is it used as like a crawl? Do they, like, what, is there like a broadcast alert, like how you'll get on other major events? And then also does this include radio?
Jody, want us to, um, take that?
Yes.
And actually, uh, Rich Henning probably helped me out a lot here, uh, with this because Rich leads our communications department and he coordinates the public notifications and how it gets broadcasted.
And just, just to be clear, these are all pre-approved by the DEP. They're in the, uh, emergency response plan that, uh, Suez, the MUA, and the NJDP have entered into agreement on. Uh, that's separate from the SOP. The SOP was, uh, more informal between the MUA and Suez and the city, which is more MUA on behalf of the city and how the MUA will follow through and inform the city to Council President's point previously. But, uh, yes, they, they are fully aware because they ask and it has to be recorded exactly where we're going to post it, uh, what type of media and the logistics there, therefore. So Rich, if you could take it away.
Thanks, Joe. We, uh, have, uh, basically an extensive New Jersey, uh, uh, market, uh, coverage, if you will, from all of the major channels, the, the standard broadcast as well as the cable channels like Channel 12. Uh, we used to have Verizon, Verizon FiOS 1. They've since taken over and, and moved all their stuff to, uh, Channel 12 as well. Um, but we have an extensive radio, TV, uh, both, uh, you know, standard and cable, uh, as well as, uh, Associated Press, uh, which has a Trenton location, but they, they normally do New Jersey stories. So we send it down to them as well. So we have, and it, this particular boil water, since it was a large, uh, piece of, uh, city and, and Hopehoken, we, we did the entire, uh, New Jersey and New York media market.
Okay. And then what, how many announcements, like, like what, if you can give us a little bit more information, like, was it just a one-time announcement? Like, and I'm just trying to get clarity on how this is broadcast out because part of the complaints that we got were not only the timing with the council, but also how few people knew about it. And if you guys are doing major media market blitzes with this information and it's still not getting to the public, there's a disconnect there.
Well, I, you know, it's a great question. Um, and, and as you probably know, the media gets to sort of pick and choose what they cover. Um, we don't, we send the information, we talk to them when they, they give us a, a, a call um, and provide as much information as possible. Uh, you know, we're trying to gather as much airtime as possible for whether it's radio or, or, or television. But, you know, that's controlled, if you will, by, uh, all the studios, you know, that, that run the, the major media markets. Um, here, I think, uh, we, we did get some pretty good, uh, coverage. Here, I think we did get some pretty good coverage from most of the New York broadcast, as well as New Jersey broadcast. You know, and to tell you the truth, I don't have it all in front of me, but if I recall looking at the, you know, the pages from the pickups, it was actually fairly extensive. But again, we don't control the media. We control the message that gets put out. And you know, that message, obviously, as Joe had talked about, is in concert with the DEP so that we're putting out, you know, the exact same message across the board. We also worked in this instance with the MUA. I think the mayor's office was also putting out some additional social media responses, if not to the traditional media, as well as with the city of Hopehoken as well. So it really was a full frontal from a media perspective in terms of getting the word out here as fast, as timely. Your question as to how often we were putting out, each time that we got new information, whether it was when the break was fixed, we would send out something to the media, letting them know, inclusive sometimes of pictures, which, you know, is something that the media very much, you know, likes to see. So every time that our team went into the field to either flush or take samples, as well as all the repairs that were ongoing up at Cedar Grove, we tried to treat that as a news story and kept pushing that envelope to continue to put the boil water message out there as much as we could.
Councilman Prizari, are you good? Couple of questions and thank you all for being here. So one just question on the timeline is you guys are alerted to the potential turbidity at noon, give or take. And my understanding is the damage would occur during the storm, so roughly 12 hours earlier. And I know there's many different ways in which a boil water advisory could be triggered, but can you just walk us through that, how you're monitoring the system for any type of abnormality so that, you know, which would then trigger the whole timeline and process and speed things up? And so if you could just help us understand as laypeople, how you're monitoring for abnormalities, how this one was specifically detected? And if there is any room to sort of speed up the detection process?
Joe, you want me to handle that? Probably yes.
Yeah, that's okay. Sorry about that.
Okay. So really, the first point is when we were having a storm like that, it's even just the treatment operations, right? So there's a lot of storm preparedness that we do that starts like seven days before we know we have potentially, the potential for an event. So, you know, we don't get a lot of time to talk about, you know, storm preparedness or just preparedness in certain situations. You know, we have procedures that we follow when any storm is going to be happening. And some of these may be basic and some are a little bit more complex. It's, you know, some of them are just making sure your chemicals are, you know, fully filled. Your fuel tanks are ready. Here at the, at the Booton Plant, we actually go on generator power before a storm because just even a power interruption can affect the treatment operations. We make sure that all our vehicles in the field are fueled and everything's tested and kind of ready to go. We build up staffing plans, you know, for a storm to be able to, you know, to react should something come about a storm. So here, you know, usually where you can have some upsets is even in the treatment system. Because you're, when you have a storm, you have runoff, raw water characteristics can change. That means your treatment technologies or your process control needs to be adjusted. And throughout the whole storm with Ida, we made those process changes and we were able to treat the water appropriately in compliance with the regulatory standards. The, as you know, the aqueduct is about 23 miles from the treatment plant, down actually to what I would call the entry point before it comes into Jersey City. And that is where we do have some inline analyzers. And this is how we got the early detection that something was wrong. Because the, we have a turbidity analyzer. And what a turbidity is doing is just recording that the, I guess you would say, the clarity of the water, right? How clear it is. And the turbidity of the water did spike. And then we also maintain a chlorine residual in the drinking water as well for disinfection for bacteria and viruses. And we did see that the, that analyzer for the chlorine residual went down to zero, which usually means that there's a demand for it. And the dosages that you were giving, it used up all the residual disinfectant that was in the water. So there itself, right, it triggered, you know, these analyzers triggered, there was a situation. When I did the, you know, the analysis, we do believe where the breach was. It takes about 12 hours for the water to get from that location where the breach was down to where the analyzer is. So to get back to your question earlier, and it's one of the things that I want to talk with, you know, Joe Cuna about, is maybe we can put in some more analyzers, you know, throughout the system so we can have earlier notifications in the aqueduct coming down to Jersey City. What it would have done is given us maybe six or 12 hours earlier indication that the incident was happening to where we can get out that information to the public before maybe the water actually reached Jersey City as well. And so that's really kind of how that event happened, right? We had the analyzers that recorded the information that let us know that we had a situation. Then from there, we reacted, you know, to what was happening. Where I think we were fortunate enough is that, you know, we were able to identify where the breach was within a short period of time. One of the things from, you know, this incident that was one of our action items to work on is, you know, what happens if we weren't able to identify it so quickly? You know, what types of crews were available to really search, you know, a 23-mile aqueduct? If it was in a location in the woods or in an area where it wouldn't have been able to be easily identified? So that is part of our action items too, is how we can, you know, search the whole aqueduct in a relatively quick timeframe to be able to identify, hopefully, not a future breach, but a breach in the aqueduct like we experienced.
God, that's very helpful in terms of context and makes sense. A couple of, they're just kind of quick questions on my end. One, just for information, what part of DEP is responsible for approving all the notices? And is there like a specific position, you know, the deputy so-and-so who ends up being the person who does that?
Yeah, the DEP has multiple groups, you know, in multiple areas, not just the water treatment here. But, you know, this, we have our direct liaison, but it goes up a level above our direct liaison. It's the management structure. And we have the director on the phone with us too during this, during this event. So I would say it's the management level under the water division that we work on with the approval of the language for the public notification.
Got it. Okay, great. And then in terms of the languages, right? I know obviously DEP required English and Spanish. You know, we obviously have a certainly diverse community with multiple language speakers. You know, I would certainly love for it to be protocol for any type of emergency, not just water-related, but any type that, you know, we have, you know, the five to 10 most utilized languages things translated into. But specifically to your capacity or to SUEZ, is that something you guys can implement as part of your SOPs? Whether it's Arabic, Gujarati, Tagalog, some of those other languages that are spoken a ton in Jersey City to be able to, once DEP gives you the approval of these, of the notices, to be able to then pretty quickly get information out in those languages as well?
It's a great question. If the city would like us to issue this in more languages, I'm sure it's something that we could work on. And we can, you know, sometimes you can build some templates because when you do have the public notification, I would say 80% of the language in there is language that the DEP just requires in the public notification. So it's about 20% that you're modifying to the specifics of an event and your actions that you're taking. So I think we could build some templates, you know, in different languages and work with the city on putting this out in different languages as well.
Yeah, I think that'd be, certainly from my perspective, Councilman Prizari brought this up at the first meeting. It's something that I think would all really be interested in seeing and also from the city side can serve as a model for some of our other communications. Once DEP has approved the notifications, is there, you know, limits to then what the city on our internal side can do in pushing those out? You know, do we have to vary, you know, for sending out our own texts or our own social media as this official city? You know, do we have to follow, you know, does our social media have to follow what DEP is asking us to do? Do they have to approve it or do we sort of then have the ability to share that as widely as possible from city channels? And under, guess what discretion do we have in terms of the language that we use as a city at that point?
Joe, you want me to? Probably. So where the DEP is really sensitive about is, you know, the approved public notification. And then, also things around time, right? We can't, we can't give, you know, a boil water advisory event, you know, can take, you know, 36 to 48 hours. Sometimes it can take weeks. So where the DEP wants us to be really careful is giving any indication that the boil water advisory could potentially be over at a certain time. So you could say, hey, it could be, you know, this shit could be over at 6:00 PM on a certain day. And, you know, something could happen to where it's not lifted and the person's not paying attention to the media outlets to see that it potentially, you know, or is still happening and it hasn't been lifted. Yeah, the city can use, you know, any avenues. We just got to make sure that we're pointing them to where the official public notification is on websites and, you know, not being really careful about giving any time-related potential lifting of the boil water advisory.
God, that's super helpful. And I think also just for us, you know, and when Director is communicating with the council, that's super helpful for us to, that we know in any of our public communications, you know, what the right, you know, kind of protocols are for us. For the emergency SOPs, communication emergency SOPs, the first question, is that something you guys can share with the committee so we can kind of review where they're at?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. That'd be wonderful. If you can email it just to either Laura and then we can distribute it to everyone on the committee, that'd be great.
Yep.
And then for those emergency SOPs, are there any changes you've made since the Ida? I know you made changes in Ecolion, but are there any changes you've made since the Ida event?
To the, to the actual SOP and timeframeing associated with it? No, we haven't. When we did a debrief in Lessons Learned, we talked about providing some more education to customers on, on how you, you know, what a boil water advisory is or how can a boil water advisory happen? And I know Rich Henning and his team are working on some videos associated with that to be able to get to customers. We've talked a little bit about the boil water lift language and, you know, how maybe that could, you know, some of it could use maybe some better clarification to customers or if they have questions. So we wanted to have some, some more educational pieces around the boil water lift language when we ask people to do certain things like run your tap water for a period of time, make sure you throw your ice cubes and if you have a softener to recharge that. So we talked about enhancing that. But when it came to the, the timeframes, the notification plan and the notification group, we didn't see any needed changes to that. But obviously, if the council would, after you've had a chance to review it and you have some suggestions, I would think it's a working document for all of us to better the communications with any type of it.
If I could just chime in, Councilman, I'm up with Greg right now. I was having technical difficulty. The one thing we are working towards is merging our databases for both SWIFT 911 and SUEZ's database, which their database is completely based on ownership of each water service for each property. Now, granted, there's going to be a significant amount of those that probably don't live in the city, but I don't know, I don't know that it would hurt to over-notify, if you will, and hope that they notify their tenants. So that's something that we're working towards so that we share a, as seamless as possible, database. Because SUEZ is, Jason, actually, we spoke earlier. You guys actually have a more extensive database. It's just a question of how many of those are directly living in the city or not. Whereas if we could just cross-merge them, which is what we're working towards, I think that'll enhance our system that much more. And again, the other thing is trying to, I don't know, publicize subscribership. That's something I would suggest that we'll probably need this committee's help on.
Yeah, you read my mind because I was actually going to go there next. Just one quick thing before I did that was for Jason, are you able, when you provide the SOPs, just to outline the changes you made between Ecolion and Ida? That would just be helpful for us to know how internally you guys were thinking about those changes too. Just a summary of, hey, here are the changes we made.
Okay.
Thank you. And for Directors Kiersten Kuna, I guess the, on this question of the emergency notification systems, and I know you guys have done a lot of work on this, I wanted to ask a couple of questions. And one was for Director Kiersten, you and I talked about the emergency wireless emergency alerts similar to Amber Alerts. And correct me if I'm making any errors. You had said that we were in the process of trying to get approved, but there had been holdups through the federal and state process. And I just wanted to ask, one, if you had an update on that? And then, two, you know, your thinking on whether that would be an appropriate tool to use when we have something like a city boil water advisory?
Good morning, Councilman, Council, Council President, Councilwoman Prizari. Yeah, just a couple of statistics and I'll cover that question in a minute.
That's perfect.
Presently, we have, I know there was a question that was raised before about the capabilities of this system as far as being able to, for different languages. We have capabilities to send out notifications for 44 languages. An interesting statistic, I think, that should make everybody aware of also, I had the opportunity to testify in front of a congressional subcommittee on homeland security several years ago on this issue. And one thing I can tell you is a lot of these systems, it's a systemic problem, is keeping people engaged with the system. Roughly 62% of the United States, people now use their cellphone as their primary means of communication. And 36% are reliant on landlines. As you're well aware, we cannot do SIMS text messaging to most landlines. So we are at disadvantage with that. And the SIMS messaging is probably the quickest way to get a message out there. Just to give you some statistics for where we at as far as subscribers, we have it broken down into four categories. Residential subscribers gives us approximately 57,411. And that's what they call the public safety loaded landlines. We buy the subscription every year from Verizon, which is the primary supplier of landlines. Out of that, about 8,449 have email capabilities also. And this is information that's self-generated when somebody signs up for, in other words, if we get a landline, if somebody signs up for additional capabilities, they'll do so. Our Jersey City employees, we have a total of 844 in the system, 746 with text capabilities and 706 with email capabilities. Now, this, this was an issue after the incident of December 10th when we had the domestic terrorism attack up on Model of the King Drive. One of the areas that I also cover Um, one of the areas uh that I also cover is the uh uh instruction of the active shooter. And we did training for approximately 502 city employees uh over a three-day period. And I encourage folks to, to use the text messaging. There was a concern obviously about, you know, if there's an associated cost for the additional messaging, which I mean, I, I kind of convinced most of the people, I think, you know, for that, that uh minimal amount of uh funds that it's going to cost you, it's, it's a good way to be able to get pertinent information, especially, especially when it comes to emergency notifications. Uh, we also have a special needs uh component, which we have about 258 people registered. 214 with text capabilities and 252 with email capabilities. Now, one of the things that we've done with this new system, we have what they call an enhanced CAD uh system that also feeds into the police public safety CAD. So for instance, if somebody calls for the police and or fire uh that, uh, let's give it address, uh 6D Montgomery Street, and there's a person in that facility that may have uh maybe had mobility problems or has uh hearing problems or uh, uh sight problems or, or anything like that. That information is automatically relayed into the responding units. And there again, that's self-generated by the person when they, they subscribe for the system. We also have hazardous weather. And many of these are tied in, uh, you know, this specifically to what folks' needs are. Some folks only want to be notified for special events and hazardous weather. Some folks may not want to be notified for emergency events. It's, it is a broad spectrum of capabilities in the system that you're allowed to avail yourself. Uh, we have 1,862 in hazardous weather, 1,633 with text and 1,753 with email. And then the last list that we use is the commercial list, which is a total of 8,020 uh entries. Uh, there again, some of them also have text capabilities, which I'm assuming that they're using their cell phones for. But the uh, the system is, is very robust. Uh, the problem is, is maintaining people's interest in it. And uh, you know, the other, we can't control what people do. You can't force them to be looking at their mobile phones at the exact moment. You send a text message, so there definitely is a challenge, people, to keeping people engaged.
Thank you, Director. Quick thing, are you able to just send those numbers to us so we can distribute them?
Yes, yes. That's, you're talking about the, uh, the numbers in the system, Councilman?
Yeah, well, you just went through.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Great. And then um, so just quick follow-up on, on the wireless emergency alerts, you know, do you think that that i- is a tool that we could use? And then do you have an update in the process of, of us and R O E M being, being kind of authorized to use it?
Yeah, it's IPOS, it's a federal system. We are a participant in it and, uh, you know, we can. IPOS was primarily designed, uh, you know, after the terrorist events. It's, it's a pretty robust system there again. It's primarily wireless and to answer your question, yes, we, uh, we are, are a participant in the system.
And do you think, Director, you know, in, in a situation like this, when you have a citywide boil advisor, water advisory, once your D E P has approved the language, we, we would at least consider what, what our requirements would be to use it? Um, and, and I ask that sort of thinking that it would make sense when, you know, Suez is limited by only having owners, many of whom are, are not in town. And we obviously use our media channels, but there are certainly folks who aren't, you know, at, at any given moment looking at it. Um, and we want to get them information in that moment in case there is, you know, truly dangerous, you know, uh substances in the drinking water. You know, do you think we would consider sending out uh an alert from the city about a citywide boil water advisory in the future? And if so, what would be the protocols to, to make that happen?
Yeah, I, it, it's, it's definitely a good idea, Councilman. Uh, you know, we work with uh Kim Scalzione and the mayor's um media staff, you know, to determine the type of messaging it's going out, when it's going out. Um, one thing that I, I, I'm a, a stickler on is, is that making sure that the the message is verified and accurate. The old saying, you can't unring the bell. Um, and that has happened. Fortunately, it hasn't happened in our, our location, but it has happened in, in locations throughout the, the country that caused more uh panic and turmoil than, than the initial message, which uh, you know, uh, i- it's really kind of hard to um, pull the message back in. It's, it's like chasing a railroad train uh down a hill. But yeah, we, um, any major event that comes up, we, I'm normally, uh, my office pretty much oversees, uh, large-scale events in the city. Um, I'm usually on site. So what we'll normally do is that based on what we have, when we have it, where we have it, you know, I'll, I'll engage um, uh, Kim and, and folks in the mayor's office so they're aware of it. And then we'll, uh, you know, formulate a message and get it out as quickly as possible.
Yeah, that makes sense. And, you know, are you wary, Director Kears or the Suez team or, or Director Kuna of any, you know, initiatives in other cities uh to sign people up for emergency alerts that have been particularly successful? Uh, so that people are, are actively opting in and then, as the director says, staying engaged?
I, I, I think the, the issue we've had with them, Councilman, is that I, I go back to Hurricane Sandy. I, I, I think there's so much information that's out there, instantaneous information that folks get on a, almost an overload. Um, we've seen a significant uptick uh pre-event. Uh, obviously with, you know, weather forecasters being a lot more uh engaged and, and they're literally a week out or possibly even up to two weeks out before an event occurs. Um, and then a- after the post-event, it seems that people either don't want to hear about it anymore or, or things of that nature. So um, it, this is a challenge that, um, as I said earlier, that I, I sat on a committee down in Washington several years ago and, and it was a challenge that was systemic throughout the country. It's just keeping people engaged. I think we're the, the era we live in now, where you have instantaneous information on anything that occurs in the world is, is uh sometimes is a very, very good thing, but yeah, I, I think it's also detrimental to what we're trying to do where uh, folks get on information overload and they, they tend to uh kind of back away from it.
Sure. Um, an idea that just came to me as we were talking is, is whether we can maybe, you know, create, create an opt-in through the leasing process where uh we either voluntarily work with the, you know, landlords and, and developers or require it via ordinance that they provide new tenants with the option of opting into these systems during the lease process. Um, that's just one random idea that, that came here, but would love to, Director, see what, you know, you, if you could also forward your committee testimony, um, and as well as, you know, we can look to see if there are any ideas from that committee that we can implement here.
Certainly, certainly.
Thank you. Um, want to open up final questions for Councilman Prizari, Council President?
No, I, 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 I'm, I'm good. Let me just ask one question though, because when it comes to getting information out, when is it emergency? And I know for certain communities, they're not like on, um, they're not like um on the internet or, or receiving anything technical. Um, there's a group out there that just doesn't. You know, is it, is it possible that when there is an emergency, we can connect with the police department in some way where they can drive through the neighborhood? With um, it's old fashioned, but it does work with bullhorns and announce that there is an emergency, please, um, you know, don't drink water or whatever the case may be, because there is a, is, is a, is a culture out there that just doesn't. It doesn't. I, I, I don't know if that can be helpful, but I know, you know, i- it's like is people will receive it quicker and their word will get out too. It'll make people start looking, you know, or questioning or going someplace to ask for information. Uh, we can connect to the police department in some way to, for them to help us in, in certain neighborhoods. I mean, they, they walk, you know, they drive through there when they want to announce anything else with a bullhorn. It's a thought.
Director Kears, do you have a, uh?
Well, yeah, it, it does work. Uh, Council President, you know, in my past life, I, I spent many time doing so. You know, we have public rest systems on the uh, on the radio cars and also the fire apparatus. Um, yeah, so that's something uh that we could definitely, you know, discuss with Director Shea and Director Morty and Gil. Um, you know, canned messaging is a way to go and, and, you know, to your point. Um, there's a lot of folks today that, that maybe do not have that internet connectivity that if they're pumping stuffing out, stuff out on the uh social media and things like that. But yeah, that's something that could be included in a plan, I would say.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you, Council President. Um, for, for the Suez team, Director Kuna, Director Kears, anything that we didn't touch on that you think is important to, to, you know, add here for any discussion of emergency communications?
Uh, from the M U A side regarding the emergency communications, I'd like to drill down a little further in, in, in the future, maybe in the next meeting uh before we get into the, the other agenda items about what you would like to see as a council uh regarding our more run-of-the-mill emergencies such as water main breaks. Councilman Solomon, you and I have had extensive conversations. I think it was when the, the tunnel was like inundated with water. It ended up being their own problem, but we ended up adding you to the uh to the immediate notification. I guess it's a well, Jason, maybe you could say what kind of notification group that is, but that's basically a group that gets the email immediately once we know that there's an issue and various updates thereafter. It's only triggered by a certain amount of residents affected because that's obviously what'll start getting you guys calls. Uh, but we haven't actually drawn that line as to where you want to be notified from. Is it at 10 residents affected? Is it at 50? Is it at 100? I believe over 100, you're automatically notified anyway. But Jason, if you could just take that from there, so we could end on that note, I, I'd like to move that further to, you know, an official, what you guys want to say. Guys and gals, obviously, everyone.
Well, Joe, you, you explained it correctly. There is a trigger of if there are 100 customers affected, it's the leak notification group. There's a shortcut to grab everybody that's supposed to be on this notification group that we provide the updates that there has been a leak identified, when, when the um estimated shut time, shutdown time will be. Um, and the future communications from that happen throughout the life of that event. You know, unfortunately, sometimes you, we run into situations where a repair takes a little bit longer than expected and we do have to extend it. Um, but then that also triggers to our communications group that is putting stuff out there on social media. And we're trying to let everybody know, uh, uh, you know, of those affected, if any changing conditions.
My first thought, Director, is, is maybe we can work with the council president and, and the council um secretary that we could basically phrase your question in an email to the full council and, and get a response from them and, and then be able to bring that up because I do appreciate you being proactive on it. And I think it'll be really helpful for us uh as a council to think through either whether collectively we want one standard or each council member has a slightly different um, you know, interest and we can talk internally and get back to you on that. Great. Um, anything else that any, any of the other folks wanted to add before we wrap up?
The one, Councilman Solomon, I, I'm sorry, on that email that um we'll be sending around for the questions for the council, just make sure the council is instructed to only answer like Desiree and not reply all because we don't want to have, you know, a meeting over, over the internet um and violate the Open Public Meetings Act.
Sure, we, we will make sure to do that. Thank you, Clark.
Thank you.
I think on the Suez side, you know, um, we appreciate you organizing this meeting today. We, you know, after every incident, we think you know, there, there always are action items or way to improve. Um, and, you know, we want to be able to communicate any type of situation. Um, you know, where everybody's pleased with how the communications are happening and that people are receiving them and if there's any um improvements that the city would like us to work on with the J C M U A, I'll work with uh Joe Cunha on those and we can, we can modify uh things to your like.
All right, thank you, guys. So I'll just conclude with thanking everybody. Thank you to Suez. Thank you to Directors Kirsten Kuna for their participation. Thank you, Council President and and thank you to the clerk for helping arrange that. Uh, our next meeting is a week from today on the 29th and the main topic is the water distribution questions that we had during Ida. Uh, so uh we will uh, you know, an agenda before Wednesday, the holiday uh on that item as well. Um, but again, thank you, everybody, for your time and participation. I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving and I'll turn it over to the clerk to close us out.
Thank you.
You said it all, Councilperson Solomon, but I do want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a happy holiday. On that note, uh, and I will also just go on the record and average, and say I will advertise the meeting either later on today or first thing tomorrow, so we meet the sunshine law requirements. With that being said, may I have a motion to adjourn at 12:22 P. M.?
Motion.
Motion made by Councilperson Solomon. I will give the quick second to Council President Wartman on the motion to adjourn at 12:22 P. M. All council members present by acclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
We are out of here at 12:22 P. M. Thank you so much, council members, council president, members of Suez and uh also Director Kirsten, Director Cunha and everyone else behind the scenes making this possible. Again, teamwork makes the dream work and have a happy Thanksgiving and stay safe out there. Have a great day, everybody. Bye.
Thank you.
Great day. Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Bye-bye.
Okay, we are off the record.